Mr. McCormick, how are you?
Good.
How are you?
Thank you.
Fine, thank you.
Good.
How's the family doing?
Good.
I don't know everybody here.
Pat, how are you? Nice to meet you Dan.
Well, sure, yeah.
Where's Ryan at these days?
Toronto.
Toronto.
Yep. I, I T guy.
Gotcha.
He tries to explain what he's doing. Yeah.
Am I dirty still, uh, out in the north of town?
Still hanging out. You, you reserve fund?
Right on. That would be an ultimate. I heard Darcy got married too this summer, right?
He did. And that's why Ryan was there.
That's what I heard. Cause I'm not that much in Cameron.
Yeah.
Chris Holmgren made it up or, uh, some, you know, in Boston.
Yeah. Young Robson.
He was there? Okay.
Yeah, no, it's great that they hang together, right?
For sure.
To bring it down to that area and still get together.
For sure.
For, uh, busy times and stuff where you're still hanging.
It's awesome. Makes the world seem a little bit smaller. Everybody knows those vibes. And there's all the land that's going to be carried. Or do you change?
Yeah.
Through the PowerPoint presentation, and I'll just, uh, the overview will be who is Canadian Malartic Corporation? And I'll talk about the Kirkland Lake Project. A bit about Canadian Malartic, as you may know, it has three components of its exploration and mining programs. One in Malartic Quebec, one in Kirkland Lake, and then one in Hammond Reef near Atticokee. So that said, in June two thousand fourteen, Agnico Eagle and Yamana Gold combined to take over, in a friendly merger, Cisco, Cisco Mining Corporation. So, and with that merger, um, came all the, uh, the assets with it. One being very important, the Malartic, uh, gold mine, which is probably one of the largest gold mines in Canada. And it's an open pit, and if you haven't seen it, you should see it, it's a, you can see it right off the highway. Um, there's a viewing point. But also important is the Kirkland Lake Project and Hammond Reef. But Kirkland Lake was actually a, an acquisition through Queenston, uh, was taken over by Cisco. And Cisco was taken over by Canadian Malartic Corporation. So really, when you try to look at Canadian Malartic Corporation, um, on the TSX or any stock exchange, it's not there. Because it is a corporation that's owned fifty percent by Agnico Eagle and fifty percent by Yamana. So in order to take a look at what Canadian Malartic is doing, you can go to the website. And it talks, the Canadian Malartic website talks a lot about the Malartic Mine. It does mention the Kirkland Lake Exploration Project and the Hammond Reef. But if you really want to know the resources and the expiration, uh, activities with respect to Kirkland Lake and, um, Malartic and Hammond Reef, go to the Agnico Eagle, uh, site or the Yamana site. You'll only get fifty percent of each, but if you put them together, they total Canadian Malartic. So the, any of the agreements and commitments that were, that Cisco had, uh, were taken up by Canadian Malartic when we took them over. So since two thousand and fourteen, we've maintained on meeting those commitments and we've been carrying on exploration. This is probably the first formal, uh, chance we get to sort of reach out, not only to Kirkland Lake, but to other communities. It's very important that, uh, we all understand what we're doing now and what our objectives are. And the objectives being very positive for the area, and that we're trying to develop the next gold mine in, in the Kirkland Lake area. So the team, uh, it's a, it's a management committee, uh, basically between Yamana and, and Agnico. Made up of three executives from each, and they dictate, uh, finances that Kirkland Lake gets, uh, for their exploration. So, um, what we do is we do a proposal to them in a management committee, they meet quarterly. We do a proposal for the, um, for the upcoming year. So this year, we had our meeting in October, and all of our financing comes from the Malartic Mine. We're basically financed from that operation. So these, uh, this committee makes those decisions and we, they, uh, take all of that money. And, um, they, uh, whatever profits are derived from the Malartic Mine, we get a portion of that for our, uh, exploration activities. For Malartic also has exploration activities and for Hammond Reef. Uh, what's important though, on the next slide here, that's the organizational chart. Looks a little, with a lot of layers, but it's actually very effective. And what's important here is that the Vice President of Exploration for Agnico, uh, Director of Sustainable Development, um, the Regional Manager, which is myself, and the project managers are all based out of Kirkland Lake or Valdor or Malartic. So there's a northern presence here. The Management Committee, of course, is based in, um, in Toronto. Respective head offices, Agnico and Yamana. So personal contacts, and if there's any issues or, or matters that come, come up with respect to our exploration program, the people who can make the decisions on the ground usually can make most of the decisions are based in Kirkland Lake or Valdor. So it's, uh, it's a, it's a very close neighboring communities to our activities. Just to give you an idea of the project size, it's a huge landmass, it's, it's very hard to see up there, but it's, uh, takes into account eight townships, two hundred and forty-five square kilometers. This land area took Queenston approximately twenty-five years to put together and consolidate since nineteen eighty-six. It's a, it's a tremendous area for gold exploration. It's got a great postal code. We're excited, we've got two senior partners that are very excited as well. Uh, that, uh, Malartic Mine is, has a lifespan of two thousand twenty-two. If they get their extension, it'll go to two thousand twenty-eight. So there's a lot of, of opportunity here to finance this project and to see it come to fruition. And plus, we've got our flagship Upper Beaver, uh, project, and I'll get to that later. But these two companies are committed long-term, they're not committed, uh, based on gold price, they're committed long-term. And they have the finances to do it. So the, this property here is made up of several, if you can see on the, I'll point to the one side. This is, this is Larder Lake here. Here's to the town of Kirkland Lake over in here. And this is the Upper Beaver Project, I'll talk a little bit about that. Amalgamated Kirkland sits over in here. Silvanite, which I'll talk about, sits right in the middle of town in here. We have Anokee and McBean over on this side, and then you have Upper Canada just, uh, north of Dobie. We have our head office in here for Kirkland Lake. We also have an office in town on Prospect, just around the corner here. So, um, again, that we've got a myriad of projects. Um, our problem is to focus in on one project, and we have been in the last couple of years. And we're making headway with Upper Beaver and, uh, some preliminary economic assessment on Upper Beaver, which is a real turning point to move to the next stage of feasibility study and advanced exploration. So again, the Upper Beaver Project, it started advanced exploration in two thousand and twelve by Queenston. And at the end of two thousand and twelve, shortly thereafter, uh, December two thousand and twelve, the company was taken over by Cisco. And with Cisco came the Malartic Mine in Hammond Reef. That exploration, advanced exploration was a little bit preliminary for Cisco's taste, and they put it under temporary suspension where it stays today. However, we've been working on it ever since, and we're working towards that development, advanced exploration decision. So it's still in the works, it's still ongoing. Mines have, have a very lengthy development phase during this period, as everybody knows, so. Silvanite, Silvanite is a, is a legacy, um, project that we've been dealing with. Since really Queenston days, uh, we've been looking at all sorts of mine hazards within that big land package. But the Silvanite Project is something, it's a, it's a, an old mine that was closed in the nineteen, mid nineteen sixties. Um, and with that, there have been some leftover, uh, mine hazards within the town limits. Uh, even though we're not working in the town, and even though we're not responsible for these, uh, legacy mine hazards, we have inherited them through the purchase and, and acquisition of Kirkland Lake, the project itself, the property itself. And what we've been doing is we've been dealing with them. And, uh, slowly, we've been working with the Ministry of Northern Development and Mines. Silvanite doesn't have a closure plan on it, as regulated, um, with, uh, regulated, uh, current regulations. It doesn't have a, a closure plan, so what we've been doing is looking at, uh, shaft caps to, uh, stope, uh, crown pillars, which, if anybody, to explain it better, there are open cavities with, uh, rock pillars to surface. And some of those pillars are, are, in our opinion, and in the Eminence' opinion and previous, uh, uh, reports, were, uh, a priority to fix and stabilize, so we started that. And, uh, it unfortunately, we have to go into people's yards to do this, because these mines were closed and development took place afterwards on top, and we've, we've have to go into apartment complexes and backyards and... And it is, uh, it is, uh, is an imposing task, but, and we're trying our best to, and we'll get better at it, to, uh, inform the public and try to mitigate as much of the impacts as possible. But these, our priority is to take care of public safety first, and this is what we're doing. So we're taking care of this bit at a time, we've got a long list, but we're poking at it. So if you see, uh, the cement trucks and the, uh, uh, sand operations and conveyors going, this is what we're doing, and we're trying to do our best job under these circumstances, they're tough. They're especially tough when we don't know where those pillars are, and we're trying to find them first of all. And that is a task in itself, so we, we've been really, uh, we've been, uh, picking away at, at our best pace. The other activities we're, we're looking at is, um, trenching and overburden stripping, diamond drilling at Upper Canada, at Upper Beaver, at amalgamated Kirkland, south of town here. We're trying to build our resource, we're trying to build our, uh, expand our resource capacity so that development and production decision, or exploration, uh, advanced exploration decision becomes much easier. So we're looking at that, and we're trying to develop that. We have to go for exploration permits as well, so this is a requirement with the Minister of Northern Development and Mines for, um, state and lease claims. So we've got a lot of permits out there, we, we send them out to communities for responses back, and then we undergo, uh, once we get approval for those permits, then we undertake the work. So there's, there's a lot of existing permits out there and a lot that we've, um, received, you know, received approval for, and we're working hard. We're covering a lot of ground, you probably saw an airplane DC three going over top, that was a gravity survey, uh, that we, uh, undertook in the summer. It was supposed to only last for two days, it lasted two weeks because of inclement weather. But that's going to give us a good idea of, and refine some targets that we've been looking at on a regional scale. And Silvanite Rehab, this is just a picture, one picture that, this is right in, in, uh, an apartment complex. It was a shaft cap, and you can just imagine there's, there's public, uh, trust, not trespassing, but passageways around this. And what we had, we had to fix, this, this, we, we looked at it, we evaluated, we said this, this cap needs to be replaced. And these are the sort of things we're doing, so, it's, like I said, it's right in town. Again, these date back to the sixties, some back to the forties, but we're taking care of it. Public safety, again, is number one, and we want to make sure that's, that's being taken care of. Upper Beaver, just want to touch briefly on this, this is a, I think the last slide. We're doing a preliminary economic assessment right now. When you do a preliminary economic assessment, uh, you're, you're trying to make, go to that next level from an exploration stage to a feasibility advanced exploration stage. So we're at that point, that economic assessment should be done by the end of this year. You see the timelines in here, you see the, uh, PEA, which is Preliminary Economic Assessment, Feasibility Study, uh, EAs, the Advanced Exploration Permitting. Take those timelines with a grain of salt, it takes a lot of time and effort to make those decisions. But if the world was perfect and all the stars aligned, this is how it would roll out. And again, once we receive that economic assessment, potentially, we could have enough confidence to move forward. Maybe there'll be more assessments after that. But if you look at that chart, you can see, at the end of the day, there's still a lot of hurdles to overcome. And one of those hurdles is, uh, advanced exploration, it's still not production. You may even be underground, but you're still doing exploration to prove up that it is feasible to mine. So you can see the timelines here to two thousand twenty-one, a possible production decision. I say, I use that, my term loosely, I really wanted to hammer home that this is just a hypothetical timeline. That, uh, that production decision is quite a ways away. So there's a lot of work to do, there's a lot of meetings, there's a lot of, uh, environmental baseline studies, all that sort of community meetings to have taking place before even the advanced exploration takes place. But we're working towards it, we're hoping to have great news for everybody in the, uh, upcoming years, if not months. And, um, you know that, uh, you have a contact person here if there's any issues or you need updates. Uh, and then you'll have more people come in here from Canadian Malartic Corporation to give you those updates in different, different, uh, areas that they're working on, whether the environmental or, or, uh, community. And, uh, they're going to be here as well. So the more people you meet with Canadian, more, more will become familiar, and you'll know exactly where we are and our objectives. So I believe that's it for this presentation, if there's any questions, uh, feel free.
Wow. Certainly, uh, we feel, uh, you know, I think the community certainly, uh, sees, uh, the presence of Canadian Malartic in our community. Uh, in town, we see the trucks. Uh, we're, we're very pleased to hear that, uh, you are fulfilling the obligation, uh, to, uh, with regards to the Silvanite, uh, and repairing the, uh, or repairing all the, uh, the vents and, and, and different, uh, safety aspects, and, uh, it, it does create some inconvenience. But I, I, I think the end result is, uh, is it's going to be a much safer, uh, place to live. And the properties that are being, uh, remediated, uh, will be of value. Uh, a property with a, a shaft or a vent in their backyard is of no value. Uh, but I, I, I think once you do this, uh, the, uh, the value of the properties will be appreciated much better. And, uh, you know, as we go forward, we always like to hear good news. Um, and, uh, we appreciate you coming, and, uh, we're excited, uh, for our community and for Canadian Malartic. And, uh, we're looking forward to, uh, seeing some more activity in our community. Exploration is, is very important to a community, uh, economic side. Uh, there's a lot of money being spent, uh, your company spends a lot of money here. As you say, you can only see the, the cement trucks traveling around town, uh, so there is lots of activity. And, uh, we wish you good luck, uh, and your company as we go forward.
Thank you very much, Mayor Tony Azzi and the council, and appreciate everybody's time, thank you very much.
Thank you, Dan.
If you don't mind, I'll just, hard ways. Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is the acceptance and minutes and recommend, of minutes and recommendations. It was moved by Councilor Kylie and seconded by Councilor Mino that council accepts the minutes of the following meeting. Minutes of the regular meeting of council held November third, two thousand and fifteen, and the minutes of the meeting to open seal tenders for tax sale properties held November fourth, two thousand and fifteen. All in favor? Carrie? Reports to municipal officers and communications. Uh, the next item on the agenda is, uh, the Ad hoc Committee to, uh, report on town leased property at Seven Archer Drive. And, uh, this Ad hoc Committee is being set up with, uh, uh, Councilor Kylie and Councilor Morgan, uh, who presently sit on our Economic Development Committee. And, uh, it's a committee that will work with our private partners, uh, presently, uh, operating on Archer Drive and, uh, future private partners that will be on operating, uh, operating, uh, on Archer Drive. So I have a... It was moved by Councilor Mino and seconded by Councilor Barker that council approves the appointment of an Ad hoc Committee to report back to council, council on municipally leased land at Seven Archer Drive. Rule number five four six eight zero 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 one six dash two five five zero zero dash zero 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 zero. The members of the committee will be Councilor Todd Morgan, Councilor Pat Kylie, and Wilford Haust, Director of Economic Development and Tourism. All in favor? Thank you. Uh, the next item on the agenda is, uh, Councilor Barker will, uh, speak on the firearm discharge bylaw review. Councilor Barker?
Thank you very much, Your Worship. So after a lengthy process, um, and diligent research, it's being recommended by the Firearms Discharge Review Committee that we dissolve the current bylaws and that we go with the federal and provincial regulations with, regarding firearm discharge. One of the main reasons is, is that, um, from an enforcement standpoint, we have enough enforcement federally and provincially to take care of this um, without having to add any extra burden and costs at our end. Um, after talking with, uh, the Detachment Commander, uh, Rick Witty here for the, uh, OPP, he says that, uh, he feels quite safe, and, um, there's no issue with regards to any, uh, unsafe practices from a firearm discharge, uh, standpoint, and he feels comfortable with this decision. As well as the, um, we've been in communications with the Ontario Federation of Angers and Hunters. They actually recommended that we look at Sudbury. When Sudbury had their, uh, the Greater City of Sudbury amalgamated with the various other areas, there were some issues with regards to their firearms discharge bylaw, because some of these areas more, more rural than others. And so, um, what they decided to do is a similar path, is to dissolve their bylaws and go and use, um, the provincial and federal laws that are there under the Wildlife Act, um, the Criminal Code of Canada, and, um, the hunting regulations, et cetera. Uh, some of the, uh, the main concern that that was brought up was, um, around the Nettie Lake area. Um, it's called Pine Tree Road, so if you hang a right, if you're heading out to the airport, and then you have that left that takes you down to where the residential area are, the residential area is, um, there's concern that there's hunters and stuff, so a lot of property back there is private. So this is going to take, if we do go this route, um, it's going to take some partnership with the community to have proper signage identifying private lands. If they don't want people hunting or trespassing on their lands to market properly, and there's various ways you can do it from a red dot, um, to, uh, private property, you know, trespassing. There's also the concern that, um, there's been that giant no hunting sign right at the corner by the airport. Now, whether that was a municipal thing or a ministry thing, we'll have to look into that a little further to find out. But that road should be considered, and again, it, it's up to the OPP and their, um, um, their definition of what a, a municipal road or, or roadway. Because it, there's residents along that, uh, pine tree, it could be considered residential, which would prohibit hunting along just that one section up and behind. But like I said, there's lots of private property back there as well, so it, uh, it, I guess negates the opportunity for hunting regardless. Um, our Aboriginal communities have been consulted, um, their main concern was that the treaty rights would be respected, um, for their people, and that's been, um, taken care of. Right now, the, the province and the feds understand what the treaty rights are, and they are to be respected um, with regards to sacred lands or anything of that sort. Um, nothing's been identified as, as of yet, but they'll, uh, they'll notify us if anything comes, comes up. Like I said, so potential resolutions that we need to be, uh, concerned about is proper identification via private, uh, private lands via signage. So around the airport, it may be wise to put, um, just kind of notification that there is the airport there. Not that it, it, it should be an issue, hunters should know be on their target, that, that's what it's taught, it's part of the law. And just look at, um, whether or not that's the signage that is present on a delay, the no hunting, the big no hunting sign is valid or not, and to take that down. So there's minimal cost to the town, well, with regards to dissolving this bylaw, so, any questions?
Councilor Morgan?
Not so much a question, uh, as I just wanted to, um, acknowledge, Tom, the hard work you put into this, because, uh, it's, it's been a bit unwieldy at times, I'm sure, and, uh, you know, it's, it's, it looks like a very elegant solution to a somewhat complicated problem at the beginning. So, uh, hats off to you and the committee for, uh, for coming up with, with that solution, thanks.
Thank you. Yeah, thank you very much, Tom, and I just wanted to comment that, uh, that residents, uh, living in the Nettie Lake, uh, area had representation on this, and residents living in the Goodfish Lake area had representatives on, on this. And, uh, so you, uh, you did a lot of hard work on this, and certainly, on behalf of council and myself, I want to thank you, uh, for this, thank you.
I'd like to thank, uh, all the representatives, we did have representatives from, we tried to meet every group, uh, including some represented, uh, some residents from Kirkland Lake that do hunt and, and have appreciation for the outdoors. So it's, uh, we had a well-balanced group, and I appreciate all their efforts and, uh, and conversing back and forth with the guards to their concerns, so, thank you to all of them.
Okay, we have the introduction reading, oh, I'm sorry. Uh, we do, it was moved by Councilor Kylie and seconded by Councilor Mino that council approves the recommendation to repeal the Kirkland Lake firearm discharge bylaws, and that a bylaw be brought forward to the next meeting for consideration. All in favor? Carrie, thank you. We have the introduction, reading and consideration of bylaws. It was moved by Councilor Mino and seconded by Councilor Kylie that bylaw fifteen dash one one four being a bylaw to, to authorize mayor and clerk to execute documents related to the sale of a portion of the Spruce Street roadway allowance to Joseph Zulga and Melanie Doley. Repealing bylaw fifteen dash zero three five be read a first, second, and third time enacted and passed. All in? Would you like to speak on it? Sure.
Um, this was a bylaw that you had passed earlier, but the legal description in the bylaw was wrong, and, and the lawyer did pick it up, so we've had to repeal that bylaw and do another one.
All in favor? Carrie? We have bylaw fifteen dash son, uh, one one six, was moved by Councilor Kylie and seconded by Councilor Mino that by, uh, bylaw fifteen dash one one six being a bylaw to authorize mayor and clerk to execute an agreement with NOHFC for funding towards a marketing internship for Heritage North be read a first, second, third time enacted and passed. All in favor? Carrie, thank you. Uh, notices of motion. Confirmation bylaw. Was moved by Councilor Mino and seconded by Councilor Kylie that bylaw fifteen dash one one five being a bylaw to confirm the proceedings of council at its meeting held November seventeenth, two thousand and fifteen be read a first, second, third time enacted and passed, all in favor? Carrie? Counselors' reports. Okay, um, I did have the pleasure of, uh, of, uh, attending, uh, a donation presentation, Councilor Kylie was there, Councilor Barker was there, Councilor Mino was, our Councilor Morgan was there. And, uh, we were very pleased, uh, to accept a, uh, generous donation from the Canadian Imperial Bank of Commerce for ten thousand dollars, uh, towards our new aquatic center. And, uh, later that evening, I had the pleasure of, uh, attending the, uh, the Kirkland Lake Festivals Committee, uh, corporate sponsor and volunteers appreciation dinner. And on behalf of the town, I, I, I thank the, uh, the committee, all the volunteers and the sponsors for, for all the things that they do for Kirkland Lake. No additional information? The German, it was moved by Councilor Kylie, seconded by Councilor Mino that council adjourns its regular meeting of November seventeenth, two thousand and fifteen to an in-camera meeting to discuss two property and one legal issue. All in favor? Carrie? Thank you.